We'll call the order, this meeting to order. First, we have the invocation by Councilmember Chris Smith and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember, Councilmember Vince Maggio.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we come to you today thanking you for this beautiful day that you've given us, Lord. I pray that you touch everybody here and that you protect us as we travel home after this meeting. God be with each and every one of us as we do today the business of the people of Bossier City. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Let's please say the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hammond.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
All present. Counsel, in accordance with Louisiana open meetings law and the adopted Bossier City Council meeting rules resolution, the city council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly. And if there is a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you are asked to please step out of the meeting. City council appointed sergeant-at-arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting.
Counsel, we need to approve the minutes of the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting. Dispense with the reading.
So moved.
Second. Any comments from the audience today? Comments from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Need a motion, counsel, to approve today's agenda?
Removed.
Second. Any comments on today's agenda from the audience? Comments from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Ceremonial matters, wrestling state champion awards.
It's up there, Bo.
Counsel, you know, we always like to honor our young, young men and women as they excel in sports or their, their high school grades or whatever. And today, we got a proclamation for Mr. Christian Johnson. Step on up, Mr. Johnson. First, let me introduce.
That's Coach Bossier Wrestling, Coach.
Yes, sir.
Coach Moke. I've known Coach Moke for several years now. You're his.
Coach Hudson.
Coach Hudson. I hadn't met you, Coach. Anyway, we had a proclamation. Excuse me. Whereas Christian Johnson has represented the city of Bossier City, Bossier High School with distinction during the recent twenty twenty-two LHSA, LHSSA State Wrestling Tournament, where he received the hard-earned title of state champ, excuse me, Division III, one hundred ninety-five pound. And whereas Christian is a three-time All-Star wrestling wrestler, placing sixth in his freshman year and fourth in his sophomore year. And whereas he also been named most outstanding wrestler of the Beeston Memorial Competition, first-team All-Region for North Louisiana, and was voted as most outstanding upper weight wrestler for North Louisiana. And whereas, in addition to excelling on the wrestling mat, he is a standout football player for the Bearcats, where he was an All-District Honorable Mention as a defensive lineman in his sophomore year and was named first-team All-District as a linebacker this season. And whereas the city of Bossier City recognizes and honors Christian Johnson for his dedication to his school, his education, and his sport, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of Bossier City, Louisiana, in regular session convened, this hereby issue this proclamation honoring the contributions and accomplishments of Christian Johnson, state wrestling champ, Division III, one hundred and ninety-five pound weight class. This man here was a. They were, did you wrestle at that airline?
I did.
He was a wrestling airline.
I wrestled as well.
He was a football player at that airline.
The sacrifices that you've been through and the coaches and the families that support you.
His son's also wrestled at airlines, so congratulations. I appreciate you coming, Coach.
Yes, sir. Nice to meet you.
Well, just get, come on, let's get a picture of her. Let me get me some bars, man. Does he have any parents here?
Christian, do you have any parents? Do you have any parents here?
Okay. Yeah, we'll fix him too. Also, Mr. Montgomery and council. I'm sure you're gonna be highly impressed with this guy.
Ernie, where'd you go? You look like a fool up here.
He's getting warmed up, Bubba. You gonna wrestle him right now.
I'm a bigger, but I'm not strong. Do you have your parents here? Bring your parents on up here. How y'all doing? This is Bossier City Council proclamation. Whereas Ernie Perry III has represented the city of Bossier City Airline High School with distinction during the twenty twenty-two LHSSA State Wrestling Tournament, where he received the hard-earned title of state champ, Division I, one hundred twenty pounds. And whereas this win represents his third state championship.
Wow.
Yeah. And whereas Ernie will move up a weight class next season and try to make Louisiana history by being the first wrestler to win four state championships in four different weight classes. Coach sent me all the weight classes, and it's, like I said, it's pretty impressive. We just didn't put it on here. And whereas, we recognize that not only is he a leader in the gym as the team captain for the past three years, but he also is a leader in the classroom with a four-point-one GPA and is, and is an outstanding student. Whereas the city of Bossier City recognizes and honors Ernie Perry III for his dedication to his school, his education, and his sport, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of Bossier City, Louisiana, in regular session convened, does hereby issue the proclamation honoring the contributions and accomplishments of Ernie Perry III, state wrestling champ, Division I, one hundred and twenty pounds.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I think, Ernie, coming from wrong, I think we supposed to do this two years ago and COVID hit, and we shut down all people coming to the meeting, but I think we had this scheduled two years ago too for another one.
I'm not sure.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Here you go.
Next up is bids. Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P two-two dash zero-three, Brookshire Grocery Arena Waterproofing and Miscellaneous Small Repair Projects.
Good afternoon, council, mayor.
Hello.
Today, we'll be opening the bids for the Bossier Grocery Arena Waterproofing and Miscellaneous Small Repair Projects. There were two addendums to the bid. Addendum number one included the list of mandatory pre-bid attendees, revised the bid form to include three alternates, and responded to questions. Addendum number two noted changes to drawings and specifications and listed substitutions prior approvals. The engineer's estimate for this job is one million, three hundred twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Our first bid is from Aquarius Contractors. Their bid bond is included. Their base bid is one million, five hundred eighty-two thousand, one hundred fifty-four dollars. That's one, five, eight, two, one, five, four, point, zero, zero. Alternate number one, their price is eighty-two thousand, four hundred sixty-three dollars. That eight, that's eight, two, four, six, three, point, zero, zero. Alternate number two's price is forty-eight thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars. That's forty-eight, four, eight, three, seven, five, point, zero, zero. There is no price for alternate number three. Our second bid is from ELA Group Incorporated. Their base bid is one million, four hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars. That's one, four, three, nine, zero, 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 point, zero, zero. Alternate number one is one hundred twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. That's one, two, six, five, zero, zero, point, zero, zero. Alternate number two is fifty thousand dollars, five, zero, 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 point, zero, zero. Alternate number three is sixty-one thousand dollars, six, one, zero, 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 point, zero, zero. And their bid fund is also included. And they have acknowledged addenda number one and number two, as did Aquarius. Our next bid is from Martin Specialty Coatings LLC. Their bid bond is included. They did acknowledge both addenda. Their base bid is one million, four hundred eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. That's one, four, eight, eight, seven, five, zero, point, zero, zero. Alternate number one, sixty-five thousand, eight hundred seventy-seven dollars. That's six, five, eight, seven, seven, point, zero, zero. Alternate number two is fifty-three thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollars. That's five, three, seven, nine, one, point, zero, zero. Alternate number three is forty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars. That's four, seven, five, eight, two, point, zero, zero. Our last bid is from McKinnis Brothers Construction Incorporated. They have acknowledged both addenda, and their bid bond is included. Their base bid is one million, three hundred sixty-six thousand dollars. That's one, three, six, six, zero, 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 point, zero, zero. Alternate number one is eighty-one thousand dollars. That's eight, one, zero, 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 point, zero, zero. Alternate number two is fifty-three thousand dollars. That's five, three, zero, 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 point, zero, zero. Alternate number three is sixty-three thousand, zero, 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 point, zero, zero.
Is that six, three?
Six, three, zero, zero, zero. That is all of the bids. I ask that you approve the reading of the bids.
I'll make the motion we approve under advisement since we're over budget.
Second. Any questions, counsel?
Counsel, audience.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is it any questions from the audience on these bids? All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Take the bids under advisement. Unfinished business, adopt an ordinance approving an amendment to the Unified Development Code, subdivision and land development design, drainage easements, Article eleven, point, four, point, six, C, point, two. Final reading.
So moved. Second. Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance authorizing the sale of forty-six oh-two, forty-six oh-four, forty-six oh-six, and forty-six oh-eight shared road to Sasquatch Properties LLC to repurpose for commercial use for the appraised value pursuant to Louisiana Revised Statute thirty-three, colon, forty-seven, twelve. Final reading.
So moved. Second. Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached joint cooperative endeavor agreement with the Arkansas Department of Agriculture, Red River Waterway Commission, Caddo Levy District, Bossier Levy District, City of Shreveport, and the Caddo Bossier Port Commission. Final reading.
So moved. Second. Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to amend the twenty twenty-one Riverboat Gaming Trust Fund in accordance with Louisiana, with Local Government Budget Act. Final reading.
So moved. Second. Counsel, I thought we talked about this last meeting. Does anybody have any questions for Angela, please? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to amend the twenty twenty-one Hotel Motel Taxes Fund in accordance with the Local Government Budget Act. Final reading.
So moved. Second. Same as this one, the last one, we talked about this last meeting. Is there any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance amending the Bossier City, Louisiana Code of Ordinances, Section seventy-eight dash seven, classified and unclassified services, generally to include the position of floodplain analyst in the classification plan, assignment of job classes to grade levels. Final reading.
So moved. Second. Anyone have any questions on the council for Mr. Ben? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring or promotion of a personnel specialist too due to retirement and backfilling any position this may create for the Human Resources Department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Counsel, I'd like to make an amendment to this, to this ordinance.
A second.
I'd like to set the salary.
You want to?
Can I have a second, first? Will we get a second yet? Second.
Then he need to withdraw if he's gonna make an amendment?
No, the amendment, somebody needs to make that. Somebody needs to make a second in order for discussion to start.
I think he seconded.
For discussion to start, and then any amendments after that overrides that.
Anyway, I'd like to just set the salary for this position at forty-two thousand dollars.
I make the motion that we amend the salary for this position to forty-two thousand, annual base pay.
My second to that. Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. And now you need a motion to approve as amended, and give me just a second to do that.
Make the motion that we approve as amended.
Second. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
Hang on, just a second, counsel. Mr. Smith, you seconded that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. I'm ready now. Mr. Williams.
Say again?
I'm ready now. Oh, for y'all to vote.
Yeah, yeah. Somebody hadn't voted though.
Motion carries. Approve appointment of Paul Marshall as the joint appointee to the Bossier Parish Communications District Number One Board of Directors. This appointment is a joint appointment with the parish, and this is the one that, from last week, and Mr. Marshall is the appointee.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Marshall, do you have anything you'd like to say? I'm sorry this got messed up somehow. You can just.
Paul Marshall, sixteen oh-seven Winchester Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana, seven, eleven, twelve.
Do you have any questions? I mean, we got it, finally got it all squared away though. I'm sorry you had to come back again.
No problem. No, sir, I have no question.
Thanks for showing up.
Thank you.
Thank you for the acceptance, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you all so much.
Yes, sir. Any questions from the audience?
Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Hammond.
Did it knock? Oh, there it goes.
Motion carries.
New business?
Approve reappointment of Andy Holly as the joint appointee to the Bossier Parish Communications District Number One Board of Directors. This is also a joint appointment with the parish. Both appointments came up at the same time.
Second. Is Mr. Holly here? Okay. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Michael Williams Mirage Apartments, location seventeen oh-two East Texas Street, Bossier City, Louisiana, request zoning amendment to change zoning classification of a certain tract of land being two-point-two-nine acres, more or less, from RLD, residential low-density, and B-three, general business, to residential high-density, RHD, for proposed apartment complex expansion.
So moved. Second. Any questions for Mr. Williams? I think he's here somewhere.
Mike Williams, Dustin?
Oh, there he is, hiding over there. Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Brett Semter, Cetera Enterprises LLC, location thirty-four oh-eight Industrial Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana, request conditional use approval for the sale of high and low-content alcohol for on-premise consumption at a proposed bar.
So moved. Second. Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a zoning ordinance, favorable by MPC. First and final reading, petitioner Virginia Calhoun, We Olive Bossier LLC, location twenty-six twenty Bean Boulevard, Bossier City, Louisiana, request conditional use approval for the sale of high and low-content alcohol for on-premise consumption at a restaurant.
So moved. Second.
Who made the motion?
I think Vince and.
Vince got the second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to authorize Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute, execute the attached cooperative endeavor agreement with the Bossier Board of Commissioners of the Bossier Levy District. First and final reading.
So moved. Second. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the promotion of one jailer, one, to jailer, two, and the hiring of one police officer, and the promotion of one police officer to sergeant for the Bossier City Police Department. First and final reading.
So moved. Second. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of two firefighter positions due to a vacancy from resignations. First and final reading.
So moved. Second. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
Yeah, I got one. Chief, for all, all of these guys, I know we approved some last council meeting, they all gonna be able to go through the same academy?
We're hoping so. We had started off with forty-two, which is the lowest we ever had. After the BIPSY Accuplacer test, we were down to twenty. After the agility test, I think we're around seventeen. And we just had another one leave, so I'll be coming in two weeks with one more. So it'd be a total of eleven, and hopefully we can find eleven out of seventeen. But we're not gonna hire just to hire. We'll make sure they're what we're looking for, so we're hoping.
Okay. Non-athletes, huh?
Well, we had one run a mile and a half in under eight minutes, so I think that's a pretty good one right there.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of John Porter for deputy marshal position with the city of Bossier, city of Bossier City Marshals Office due to resignation. First and final reading.
So moved. Second. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of an electrician for the lift station division in the Public Utilities Department. First and final reading.
So moved. Second. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve parade permit fee waiver for Walk with the Cross Friday, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved. Second. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution granting professional of record the authority to develop the specifications and advertise for bid packages on behalf of the city of Bossier City as part of the LTRI Joint Endeavor Agreement. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Charles, could you highlight this first?
Yes, we have entered into the, the LTRI building, Louisiana Tech Research Institute, being built next to the existing CIC building, is almost finished. And we entered into several months ago as the goal. And we entered into several months ago as the goal always was in a joint cooperative endeavor agreement with Louisiana Tech University. Louisiana Tech is gonna be responsible for the maintenance of the building, furnishing of the building, and the staffing of the building with the research entities that will work with CIC and private industry. Because they have, uh, Tech, of course, has access to the engineers, the math people, um, you know, what they basically refer to as the STEM people. You know, and they'll work in conjunction with a lot of retired Air Force personnel who choose to remain in the area in these high-tech jobs. Tech has, um, pursuant to that agreement, um, a minimum of three million and up to seven million dollars they have to spend to, um, basically, for lack of a better term, finish out the building. There's gonna be, Tech's gonna be responsible for an AV audiovisual package, furnishings, furniture, things of that nature, so on and so forth. So this would basically, um, however, the building is, belongs to the city. And therefore, we, of course, want to, uh, you know, have some sort of say-so and make sure that what's being put in there, um, is being put in there properly and with our approval. And this would, so therefore, we would have our design professional approve everything, working in conjunction with Louisiana Tech's, uh, people and, and that will make sure it's, it'll be bid it out through the city, and then Louisiana Tech will reimburse the city for its costs.
Is the parish involved in this at all?
The parish is involved in this, too. They have also contributed money.
Yeah, I saw, okay, I didn't see it on there, but...
But the parish would rather the city be involved in the, in the bid process because McSwain, who is present, um, has been working, he's the architect of record, and I believe he's been cooperating with Louisiana Tech's personnel and design personnel.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote. That's all for the agenda. Now we have an Engineering Department monthly project report.
Motion carries.
Good afternoon, counsel. Um, here to stage all on the various things we have going on in the Engineering Department over the last month. You're gonna notice a little decline in our overall ongoing design and construction projects. Much of that's related to pulling projects like Tinsley in the first phase of the Carriage Way off our list. Uh, we're now sitting at about a hundred and five million in ongoing design and construction projects, ninety-eight million of that currently under construction. Got ten projects in the designer bid phase, um, and then nine projects under construction, uh, out in the field. Eleven subdivisions in or nearing the construction phase as well. We added this chart, uh, a little while back, just kinda gives you an indicator of the major projects we have. If they're in green, they're on or ahead of schedule, and the red bars indicate those projects which are behind, uh, schedule as based on, you know, what we're tracking as far as money spent and contract time spent. Uh, Phase Two of the Walter O'Bigby Carriageway is just a little behind schedule. Um, that's a good shot there of where they're at. If you haven't been by there, you'll, you don't know, but there's a massive amount of work happening out there every day. Currently, we're sitting at about sixteen percent complete, uh, with seventeen percent of the time elapsed. Uh, the Walter O'Bigby Carriageway Pump Station, big success here. They're way ahead of schedule, about eighty percent complete with only about forty-two percent of the time elapsed there, so we're excited about that, that, uh, contractor's been grabbing and getting. Coleman Street is complete.
All right.
So this'll be the last slide there. Pretty slick. Uh, it's worth going out and checking that out. Um, this is a shot from Hamilton Road looking west down Coleman towards, you can kinda see, uh, horseshoe there in the background.
Is that sofa come, come with it?
Yeah, great looking sofa there.
That's my sofa when I walk in.
You're welcome to grab, go grab it and get it.
Ben, I, I do appreciate you listening to all my gripes and complaints, me and Principal Thrash, too, but...
Well, I tell you, he, uh, I don't know if y'all deal with him, but that Principal Thrash, he's no joke over there. He's been very, very interested in the comings and goings of this project, and I think it's made for a better project out there. It's helped, uh, keep traffic, uh, issues to a minimum, and Councilman Williams, we appreciate your efforts. You've been out there and helped keep the peace, so we, I don't know that we would be here without all of that, but it's a great project. Looks awesome out there. Yes, sir.
Castillon, please. Mr. Jacobs, in the, previously to your tenure, um, Mr. Hall had to deal with DOTD regarding several, um, additional cost, one being for potential claims and so forth on the Coleman Street, which I'm sure they won't release the money, you know. But I would like them to define how much they're still holding of our money that we had to advance them for various causes, for reasons, and when they expect we'll have that money back. And if I'm not mistaken, it, it was approaching a million dollars. Am I right, Ben?
The total contribution by the city was over a million dollars, half of which were for the, the items, David, the quasi ambiguous.
I just would like to detail from the beginning of when we made the agreement with them to swap the road, you know, where the East Bank is to get to Coleman, um, and what the original contract amount was, what were the addendums and the amount of money that we paid in addition to what the original contractual obligation was? The fact that we're finished, what we spent, what's left over, when do we expect to receive that back?
These were, these were contingent specifications, basically.
Yeah, there, there, I think there was two of them, Ben. There may have been more.
I'll, I'll pull all of that.
But I, I, for, you know, in the next month or so, whatever, you know, I know everybody's busy, but I, I would like that accounting to be presented to the councils so that they, um, have an idea and they're aware of how much money is due back to the city on this project.
Yeah, David, 'cause, you know, they forget pretty quick.
A lot, believe me.
Yeah, they do. I don't recall many change orders on this project either, so...
No, I just, just a simple accounting from beginning to end. I think the last one had to deal with, uh, liability, uh, claims, which I can't imagine why, when you have engineers, I, I argued this point, but DOTD refused to proceed with the bid, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, sir.
Until they had the check in hand, and I think it was five hundred thousand something, I'm just rounding off. But we had to advance that money when, in fact, that the whole procurement system of the bid laws is the fact that the contractor provides a lot of insurance, performance and payment bonds, which goes along with the warranty period. They're named as an additional insured with waiver subrogation, primary, non-contributory. I can go through all the language, you know, on the contract as far as insurance goes. And why in the world we would have to advance five hundred thousand dollars in addition to the amount of insurance that we, is required indemnifying not only DOTD, the state of Louisiana, and Bossier City? Why in the world we put that money up? But I'm not gonna let that go, and, you know, whatever we have to do legally to get that money back, I believe it's ours. So now, that's my spill.
Yes, sir.
You can tell how I feel about it as well.
Well, David, you should've been there at the meeting Friday with us, 'cause there's a lot of DOTD guys there, I'm telling you.
You'd have had fun.
Oh, yeah.
That maybe we're five hundred thousand on that job.
It probably is. David would've had a heart attack.
Yeah. They have the defibrillator in the back.
I'll pull all that together for that.
Thank you.
I'd like to see the city get some of those resources back. East Bank Fire Station, uh, project's a little behind. Um, seems as so that's the way of the world these days, but it's taking shape out there. Up fifty-eight percent of the time has elapsed, and fifty-two percent of the project is complete. LTRI, uh, this is another massive project. The building is in the dry. Contractor has moved to the inside. Been working with McSwain, um, regarding the elapsed time on this. We're showing here they're ninety-two days behind, um, on that project. South Bossier Redevelopment Project, we issued substantial completion on that. Uh, contractor still has cleanup and punchless items and things like that, but, uh, that one's approaching our rearview mirror.
Ben, if you don't mind on that, y'all are gonna do striping?
Yes, sir.
Correct? Okay.
Are they gonna...
That won't be part of this project, but we will, we have scheduled, uh, striping, uh, on Shadro, on Shady Grove, excuse me.
Ben, are they gonna start replanting trees that...
Yes, sir.
That passed away during the...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Private development, you can see there's been a massive uptick in that. I won't read off all those subdivisions, but, uh, the private sector's, uh, working to build residential inventory in our area. Uh, projects out to bid or in the design process, you have, um, highway lighting along, uh, Seventy-one South. Uh, we have a bid opening scheduled for later this month. Uh, the Full of Love Drainage Improvements, we're about ten percent complete with that. We're working internally to get that project done. The survey's complete. Uh, we're working to develop preliminary plans. Uh, Tinsley Drainage Basin Improvements, that's very close to being complete. Uh, talked to Charles today. We have some property issues there. We're working out, but, um, very close to getting that out to construction. Barto Lane and Montgomery Lane Drainage Improvements, that's up there by Two Johns. Uh, survey's gonna begin soon on that. Uh, the Bossier City Municipal Complex Parking, we opened bids. Uh, project's moving into construction phase, uh, here very shortly. We met with the contractor last week on that. Uh, Innovation Drive and Swan Lake Traffic Signal, that's Neil Schaefer. Uh, plans are being updated. We expect those to be done within the next couple of weeks. Uh, the citywide street improvement project for this year, uh, we are just gearing up to get those, uh, packages put together for the contractors. Parkway Drive slash Elm Grove Ditch Improvements, this is another project, um, that's kind of in the right-of-way acquisition phase. We're working diligently. I think we're gonna, uh, get that closed in the next, I'm gonna say, give or take four weeks. Properties tends to slow these projects down. Uh, Golden Meadows, US Seventy-one Turn Lane, um, got survey and traffic study, uh, to move on that. Very little's been done on that. We need to, uh, light a fire there. And then the Bossier Arts Council Building Improvements, um, we're about ninety percent complete. Look to be putting that project out to bid here very soon.
Mike, can we, can we look at that? I mean, the building, is that for a new building?
No, sir. That's to take care of the building envelope that exists there now. There's a lot of water leak issues and things like that. Change the facade of, of the appendage that was put on there some years back to make that all...
I mean, do we wanna, I know that, do we wanna spend a whole lot of money? I mean, we, we need a new one down there. We know that. That was kinda in the plans.
A, a new Bossier Arts building? That's at Charles discretion.
Well, then, this is the... It's not the Bossier Arts Council. I'm sorry, Ben. I'm talking about the senior citizens.
Yeah, this is Bossier Arts.
Okay. Yeah. I remember that facade now.
It's, it, there was a little kinda Band-Aid project floating around there, but the problem is, is, you know, it's an old, I call it historic building. It's an important piece of, of history for Bossier City, so, um, we expect that probably to mushroom a little bit. The roof is old, um, things like that, but we're, we're close to letting that one out. I think that'll clean up kind of, you know, one of the city's facilities out there in that whole East Bank district.
Did we change the facade to match something else down there?
The, we want the whole building to be contiguous. It'll be more brick, you know, kind of that older style architecture.
So wasn't brick approved some months ago? Already brick approved to, to brick?
Yes.
The building, yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah. Kind of in keeping with the new fire station down there.
Yeah.
Move on. Traffic engineering, uh, we've been coordinating with the Bossier Parish Police Jury and DOTD on left turn extensions for access to I two twenty and LA three. That's the project that's creating a lot of traffic complaints within the city. It's underway. Contractors working weekends to minimize the length of impact. I don't know if you noticed, if you were out there today, they're placing the concrete curb on the northbound lane there on the south side of I two twenty. So they're, they're getting after it. Um, we're in the early stages of the traffic signalization software upgrades. Traffic signal study, um, and plans being performed for traffic signal at Swan Lake Road and Innovation Drive. We talked about that previously. We're very close to having that put together. We're also studying, actually designing, a new southbound right turn lane on Swan Lake to turn on to Innovation. So, um, that whole area is one of those massively traversed areas, and it's gonna continue to be that way and grow. So we really wanna be careful about what we do there.
Hey, Ben, I don't mean to interrupt you. On the one right before, the, um, traffic signalization software, what, what is, what is that exactly gonna do? Is that gonna, all the lights interact better where?
It, no. Um, it's, it's... What we don't currently have is the ability to monitor any signaling remotely. Um, we're also having to use very, very old software and computers to get in and do any upgrades. Like, if we wanna go in and change the timing or change the programming of that signal, we have to use very archaic methods. So this is to bring all of that computerized system up into the, you know, twenty-first century. They, we currently have interconnectivity between signals in some areas, so that's occurring. But this'll give us a better way to diagnose problems and to make modifications without having to put three and four people out there at the intersection to work on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay. Uh, created a couple of slides here for the Wimpel Road and Old Brownlee Intersection. Y'all all must've got phone calls over the weekend, 'cause I got about a hundred yesterday. So I felt like it'd be important to talk about this in a little more detail. We conducted a traffic study. I say we, we commissioned a traffic study. Y'all did. Um, that was completed, and the intent of that was to determine if a signal was warranted at the intersection of Wimpel Road and Old Brownlee Road. So that study evaluated existing site distance, turn lanes, if those were needed, the speed of, of vehicles traveling through that corridor, crash history, peak movements, two-way stop control, and roundabout addition. Okay, so it was very thorough. Glenn has a copy of that here if you wanna take that home with you. But it was a very, very thorough study. That study also included the growth of Providence Classical Academy, which is just south of there. They're looking to expand the number of students over the next eight to ten years, up to about a thousand students. So the conclusion of that, uh, kinda we highlighted in red here, one of the, the major issues as we see it is the fact that most people traveling Wimpel Road are, are going above the speed limit. They're speeding through there. It's posted speed limit of thirty-five miles an hour. Most of them are going forty-five miles an hour. So we call it there that those speeding impacts, um, create shorter gaps. So if I'm traveling north or south on Old Brownlee Road, I think those are the people that are having the most hardship there. If I've got folks moving real quick along Wimpel Road, I'm anxious to get out into that intersection, and, and the gaps between cars are a lot shorter. So we definitely observed that in the study. The study concluded that the peak AM conditions warrant a westbound left turn lane. Uh, it did not warrant a signal, um, even after all of the additional population was added to that. No signal was warranted there. Uh, the study proposed a roundabout suggesting this would provide the highest level of service. Um, obviously, putting a roundabout at that location is gonna require right-of-way utility relocation, drainage improvements, et cetera. You got property ownership issues and things like that. We met with the parish, uh, engineers last week, discussed kind of an interim solution to really slow that traffic down, which would be advanced warning signs along Wimpel Road. What those would look like is as you're westbound or eastbound, you'd have a sign indicating you've got an intersection ahead with a flashing yellow light on it. Uh, that's your least expensive option. We're also considering a radar speed sign, so your speed limit repeater when you're there and you're going over thirty-five miles an hour, thing's gonna flash at you and make you slow down. That option costs about ten grand. We've sent those options to the parish. We would appreciate their... We would appreciate their contribution within that scope of work and we think that's a quick improvement that we can make out there to get the traffic to slow down through that corridor.
Is that whole intersection in the city limits?
The intersection is.
The intersection is.
The intersection is.
That's it.
So, as you get past the intersection to the west, that's the parish. And there's, I think, the sections north and south of the parish, but going?
East.
East is the city.
What?
What about a stop sign?
What would have to?
Like a four-way stop?
It's not warranted.
What would have to happen, Ben, for a signal light to be installed there? What would have to happen?
So, don't catch me quoting all of the manual on uniform traffic control device requirements, but there's seven requirements that must be met to warrant a signal and we're nowhere close to that.
Okay.
That same manual does not allow for the use of four-way stop signs to slow traffic down. This commission, council, excuse me, has decided from time to time that it's in the city's best interest to add them there, but it would take council action to put a four-way stop sign there.
We'll talk about, though, the north-south traffic flow, the fact that it, that's not the issue. It's the east-west and the few vehicles that go north-south, you know, evidently. I mean, I can see you're at a dead stop and they're flying through there, you know, at forty-five or fifty miles an hour. But the point being is that you, to start managing every intersection for a few cars, pretty soon, you're going to stifle traffic. And that, the reason Wimpel Road was extended between Airline and Benton Road was to keep them off of other corridors. So, to allow traffic to traverse back and forth from Benton Road. So, it's performing as it should, yes. There, for the few cars, and correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct.
On north-south, you know, it is something you have to be careful with when you, when you make that crossing. You know, the suggestion, I mean, and is, you know, when you're coming out, that you go to Brownlee Road and therefore you have a signal at each end of Brownlee Road to get on Airline or Benton Road so that you can make a, you know, a safe progression and so forth. Am I right?
You are.
I realize it puts a few of those people that utilize that north-south corridor on Old Brownlee Road in a bit of inconvenience, but.
Yeah, I noticed this more, I drive there twice a day, every day, if not more. And the study indicated that it's the southbound traffic movements that are impacted the most. And when I went through there morning peak time, there were two vehicles stopped waiting to continue south. Nobody waiting to continue north. That may change in the PM where they're waiting to go north versus south. The other thing to point out is just north of here was Advance Field Road.
Yeah.
The parish has a project, I met with them last week as well. They're, they're working with all the utility contractors up there. They're going to extend that all the way out to Airline, straight shot to Airline through there. So, you're going to have another east-west theoretically, east-west corridor. Parallel on Wimpel Road. So, that's going to also improve, you know, one's ability to stay away from that intersection during those peak times if they so choose to try another route. But again, I think probably, this is my speculation for the reason of all the calls. This has been, you know, an intersection that gets a lot of heat, but with Benton Road necked down to one lane, more and more people over the last couple of weeks have been using some of these alternative routes, which has created probably on, on y'all's end with your constituents, more frequent calls there. There's not much we can do until that lane, those extended turn lanes get completed.
Given the fact that the study did not indicate a traffic signal, did the study indicate how many accidents over the last six months or twelve months at that location?
It did, I can't quote those, but it did look at that.
Was it high, low, medium?
It was low and they were like rear, rear, rear-ended. We think that the accidents predominantly occur because of, if I'm traveling north or south and I'm hesitant to go through that intersection because of the oncoming traffic either way, that's where, where those incidents are occurring.
Yeah, because I'm thinking if you have incidents or accidents that occur, then you'll have an outcry from citizens saying that why do we not have signals at that, at that location? So, that's why I wonder how many accidents has been reported to date.
David, if you look at this sheet here at the top, it says Bossier City Engineering. Go down to the second one, Coleman Street. Says the old city of Bossier City funding. That's more than we thought, isn't it?
It's a lot.
I know, I didn't think it was that much, though.
No, I think, I recall the number being somewhere around seven hundred thousand originally and almost the same contribution to do that.
Yeah, originally, if you want to go back to when we were swapping it, when we took Marksdale Boulevard, which was a state highway right where East Bank is. You know, it was dollar for dollar. If you go back and look what we got for what we were paying for this, it was more like three or four to one rather than one for one.
Thank you for looking at that, by the way, I'm glad that paid off.
I don't, I don't see where that puts in there that additional money, did it?
No, I've got to, what we've got to do is, I'll pull that agreement and highlight what.
I want the total from start to finish.
Got it.
Just a brief update. Brian Hammond, myself, Free Bird, went to the DOTD meeting Friday with the state. And I can tell you how unprepared there was, because they didn't have an answer for it. And y'all will tell me if I'm wrong. Nothing.
Nothing.
You know, all it is, is take the bridge. We're going to close one of your streets going to Central, Brookshire Center. We're going to have a median in the middle of Jimmy Davis Highway with trees and shrubs. As Brian noted, is, we've got businesses and houses on there, you know. This bridge is supposed to go north of Jimmy Davis Bridge.
They're wanting to close the major intersection at the bottom of the Jimmy Davis Bridge, where one, traffic coming in, if they're heading westbound on Jimmy Davis, turn right on Brookshires Drive right there, they want to have, that's going to be completely closed. That's going away.
But they'll make it right.
Coming home in the evenings, yeah, it was.
I don't, I don't know that, I didn't get an invite, I don't know that.
You will have another one in two weeks, you can come to.
But I've listened to some of the commentary and I'll hold my remarks.
Yeah.
Mr. President, I just want to know for the record, you didn't buy the bridge for the city of Bossier, did you?
No, sir, I'll tell you, Mr. Darby, what I did. And like the police jury did and the city street report kind of did, we don't want the bridge.
Okay.
And as one of the police jury members said, give it to Billy Nungets, let him make a park out of the bridge. And they wanted us to build parks, parking, restrooms, lights. I said, this, you know, the entities, you're putting all this burden back on entities, you know, we can't handle that. So, anyway, there was a lot of no, even tear it down was some of the thoughts, so. But you'll get invited next time, because I will call you.
What I would like to see is the focus put back on the need for a four-lane bridge. That's what the focus ought to be, not a park.
Hey, Ben, I've got one thing for you. The, the trees on Highway Seventy-One now, are those the responsibility of the city now? They are? Okay, I'll get with you.
Ben, an issue.
Yeah.
Counsel, anybody got anything else?
Mayor has something.
Mayor?
Bubba always forgets me, doesn't he?
Well, I don't have my gin, I don't have comments.
It's so quiet. I mean, I haven't, I mean, I.
No birthday.
All right, well, Rodney Orr, our Director of Fleet Services, I see that he's scared and he's not here today, but today is his birthday, so happy birthday Rodney, wherever you are. Bossier Schools Talented Arts Program just completed two murals at City Hall up on the second floor. They will be featured in tomorrow's edition of the Bossier Press Tribune. They did a wonderful job and have brightened up the city hall. You ought to, you ought to come up and look at it, it would be nice. The I-Three Art Expo is moving into the Civic Center and will open to the public March thirty-first and through April second. We have some very talented students in Bossier and I encourage everyone to stop by and see the beautiful artwork they have created. Also, right now, I'd ask, I'd ask our fire chief Brad Zagone to step up and show y'all our new fire truck that we recently added to our fleet.
I saw that on Facebook or somewhere.
This one, actually, Councilman Montgomery was very instrumental. This is a three-year project. We just went down and did the final inspection a month ago or so. This one, Chief Mike Montgomery bought somewhere, and I'm trying to relive the history here. He bought it at a junkyard somewhere, but through our research, it seems to be the second motorized vehicle Bossier City Fire Department ever owned. We were, understood it to be a nineteen forty-five, but looking back at American La France, Chief Pinel and them, think it may be a forty-two, somewhere around in there. The oldest one we have, the nineteen thirty-two, we couldn't find a grill to it to redo it. We had other parts, but not all the parts. But Chief Montgomery donated this to the Bossier City Fire Department and we took it down to Ferrera three years ago and it got refurbished. So, it's designed now to be used in parades or exhibitions and we even designed the back to where the bench seats will fold up. And heaven forbid we ever have a line of duty death, we could put the casket in the back of this. It's actually parked out here, so when you leave, you're welcome to stop by, take a look at it in person. But it will be parked at the new fire station. It has a museum part with a big window that people can come by when they're in the East Bank District. And we have a lot of memorabilia, old gear, pool boxes from back in the day, how they dispatched way before my time. But this is a lot of neat things and the history behind it. When you look at this thing and see the pump panel and how things worked and the open cab, and it's just pretty cool to have. So, that is the original siren up there. They transferred it from a six-volt, I think they used a converter, made it twelve-volt. But it is the original siren up and everything on it, so.
Yeah, we all remember when it used to hang off the back when it had a fire and jump out.
You would have had to, definitely, on this one, two people in front.
Can I take a picture? When we get old, we can have something to look at.
Absolutely, absolutely. But.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Pretty cool to have, so. Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. All right, also, there will be a change of command ceremony at Marksdale Air Force Base this Thursday, March the thirty-first. Colonel Scott Wallmuller will assume the command of the Second Bomb Wing from Colonel Mark Demeterson, who will move to Pentagon. I know both of the men, they're both great. They've been real good friends. And I'm going to miss Demeterson living at Pentagon. He's, he's been a real good friend since he's been here. But Wallmuller, his, they already lived here for a while and they're good people. So, that's it. President, I appreciate you giving me a chance to talk.
Yes, we'll catch you. Anything else? Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.